So I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on July 11th, 2019. Can everyone rise if able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. We do have one amendment for this evening's agenda. I'd like to remove, under Section 3, Item A, the Interstate Transit Award Recognizations. They couldn't make it this evening, so we'll have to reschedule that. But given that one amendment, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve today's amended Agenda and Consent Agenda items. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We have amended the agenda. And first up is our public recognitions and presentations under our compassionate community recognition. Is it Jenny?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we get to celebrate our second quarter Compassion is Contagious Recognition of 2019, and I am excited to recognize and introduce a group tonight that I can't say enough wonderful things about, the Lacey Subchapter of the Association of the United States Army, which is part of the Captain Meriwether Lewis Chapter of AUSA. Lacey AUSA works tirelessly to support the 1-2 Striker Brigade Combat Team, which is also Lacey's adopted brigade at JBLM. They commit endless hours, all volunteer, I might add, to planning fundraising events, Brigade Family Fund Days, and providing support through the holidays for the thousands of Ghost Brigade soldiers and their families. This group of people is passionate about supporting our military, and I am fortunate enough to work with them on behalf of the city, and I've learned so much from them and am very thankful for the friendships that have formed. At this time, I would like to introduce Isabella Colvin, who is the Lacey Subchapter Secretary, as well as the Main Chapter Vice President, as well as Amy T. Meyer, the Main Chapter President. They are going to just tell us a little bit more about AUSA and the Lacey Subchapter, and then all the ways that they support our military.
A little shorter. I want to start by saying thank you so much for having us, and it has been such a pleasure to work with such a great community over the years, and you guys have partnered with us so very well. The Association United States Army, I'll just give you a real brief summary, started in 1950, and Congress was asking for one voice for the Army instead of all the little associations, and so they created the Association United States Army to speak for the whole Army. And what's nice about our association is, from the beginning, it was inclusive, and that means to be a part, to support our Army, you can be active duty, you can be retired, you can be a military spouse, and you can be an engaged citizen, and you can be a part of our group as a volunteer doing really great work in any of those capacities. And so that really spoke to me when I got out of the Army and how to give back to community. Our chapter, the Captain Meriwether Lewis Chapter, actually was founded in 1954, and so that's when the group of volunteers from this area started helping soldiers around, then Fort Lewis. Our chapter does wonderful programs like Suits for Service Members. We do Operation Recruiting and Enlistment, which you guys are a part of, and just it goes on and on. I'm going to let Isabella talk about the Lacey Subchapter's impacts, but again, I just really want to say thank you for having us out.
Thank you, Council, Mayor Ryder. I just want to say, from a personal aspect, I'm a military spouse, and what we loved about Lacey was the welcoming environment. We never felt like we were transitional soldiers, which led us to retiring back here in Washington, and we're excited about that. What we love about our partnership with Lacey is the footprint that they have in our day-to-day lives, and we're thankful for that. And so, things like our Memorial Day celebration, remembrance, is important to these families, and when Mayor Ryder and the team takes time to just come and say hello and shake hands and let them know that we're welcome. We also host at the rack 7,500 soldiers for a family organization day, and so that's, you know, 7,000 hot dogs and buns, and those things are huge, and we couldn't do it without the volunteers from the City of Lacey. And they just come in from everywhere, from your business members, from your Chamber of Commerce even come to participate, and that's super important. And really, we're thankful for our relationship with the Veterans Hub. So, the Veterans Hub now, every month, will hold our monthly meeting, so it'll give our service members a chance to come in and see what we do on a big scale, not just for active duty, but for us retiring members as well. And so that's a beautiful invitation, and we thank you for helping facilitate that, Jenny. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, AUSA and our Lacey Subchapter, for really everything you do for our community, not just the military families that are here, but really making Lacey the community that we're so proud of. And so, on behalf of the City Council, all of our residents and businesses, and all the wonderful military families, we'd love to present you this 2019 Compassion is Contagious Recognition Award for all the work you do, and thank you so much for everything.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So, next up on our agenda is public comments, not on the item. We do have several people who've signed up. The first person who signed up is John. Can you please come and give your full name, give your address, and keep your comments, about three minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Pettit, 9725 Rich Road, Southeast Olympia, Washington. I live in East Olympia, but I'm kind of one of these citizen advocates, and I kind of watch different levels of government. It's interesting, Lenny says, "Well, it's about, you know, why would I worry about money?" Well, I worry about everybody's money because that's just kind of my thing to do. I watch, and I came across something that I just could not believe. I could not believe that the citizens of Lacey wanted to invest potentially $5.6 million in the unincorporated Thurston County. And you're saying, "Where's that happening?" It's happening at Capital City Golf Course. Now, you have a program right now to convert over to sewer, and I'm not sure if the reason why you want to get people to sign up for the program is that you want to take away their right to vote about future annexation, but when I learned a little bit more about this, the city has committed, and what they say here is that they will pay the physical connection to a new sewer. They'll pay the Lacey Sewer General Facilities charge. They'll pay the lot general facility charge. It amounts to probably in the neighborhood of $14,000 to $16,000 per parcel, and there's over 400 parcels. So the question is, I'm not really sure if this isn't a gifting, when you actually go on people's property and you install pipes and everything on their property to hook up, if you're not actually gifting citizens' funds over to another person? I would surely doubt that that is correct, that you should be doing that, but you have someone here that might want to look into that, because it doesn't seem appropriate. The other thing which I'm going to touch base on is, once again, the part about the question about, "We're making you this wonderful deal. You're going to get $14,000 of benefits." But, in addition, the Lacey ordinance to receive the new City of Lacey Utility Service, a waiver of annexation protest, must be executed. A waiver annexation is a signed statement attached to the property title that stipulates the property will not protest annexation if and when that occurs. You know, in a time when we talk about things like Russian collusion, it seems like I would have a hard time imagining it's okay if I paid you $10, that you'll give me your ballot and I get to vote for you. There's something basically wrong, that you can't trust that your services are of enough value that people would want to join Lacey without losing their right and opportunity to decide at the time where a future property owner... It just doesn't really work right, and I'm not really sure, since I did some study, it's supposed to be about protecting a well, well number four in Lacey. Well, I did a little research, and actually, I congratulate the City of Lacey, because you have water quality testing, and while I'm presuming that this presents, like the nitrates are going up and everything, actually, over the last 10 years, your nitrates level has actually dropped.
So, John, you've reached your three minutes. You threw a lot at us, and there's a lot to unwrap there, but if you'd like to learn more about what you talked about here today, I would be happy to talk to you offline.
Well, you're more than welcome. You got my contact, and you're welcome to call me anytime.
Great, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next up is Terry. Name, address, keep three minutes.
Got it, got it. Good evening. My name's Terry Ballard. I'm a 35-year veteran, and I retired in 2012. I'm located at 321 Wildcat Street in Lacey, which is unincorporated Thurston County. I own two properties there in Tangawalt, and I'm subject to the Henderson Inlet Septic Fee, which should be a fee to the golf course, since it has all this problem with septic, and county needs to look into that. What I found is that Woodland Creek is being polluted through stormwater. That stormwater is coming from Lacey. In 2011, Tangawalt no longer contributed to Woodland Creek. In 2012, Lacey did construction on Carpenter Road and now divert excess stormwater into the creek, which appears to be semi-regular. Of course, on the corner of, on one of the corners on the outskirts of Tangawalt, they built three wells, three dry wells. Those dry wells take care of our pollution into the Woodland Creek. Why this, correction, okay. Why doesn't the City of Lacey use the same technique as Tangawalt? Same, why are you still using old methods and polluting Woodland Creek and blaming it on Tangawalt, especially septic? Also, understand, Lacey participates in distributing non-potable water, which flows into the stormwater system that would constitute an illicit connection. That's real bad. Shame. Shame. As a custodian of our environment, you should put profit last, not first. Nitrates, and the nitrates include septic, fertilizer, animal, and all even goes far as lot, because lot puts out basically 475 gallons of waste, which is their 5%, into Bud Inlet. Guess what just died in Bud Inlet? There was a whale that died in Bud Inlet. Okay? Guess what, guess where all that mineral oil went from the, from the, from, excuse me, Tom Water Brewery? It went into the stormwater, which went into Capitol Lake, which flows into, through Bud Inlet. Okay? They need to have that containment there. They need to, they need to beef up their stormwater systems and all the stuff they put onto the ground to include Capitol Golf Course, which is the fertilizer. Okay? It's not the septic. I have the data. You can have, you can have theory, you can have possible, possible intentions, but this is fact, and fact that you find online. Also, Mr. Pettit mentioned that there's no difference between the two, there's a, no difference, there's a better difference of less pollution from the 2008 report that you put out to the 2018 report. And you are trying to tell the people that something that comes, that something that's put in a soda to drink is contamination from a septic tank?
Thank you, Terry. You've reached your three minutes. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you for hearing me.
Next up is Amy. Amy Ty Meyer? How about Isabella and John? Do you have, I think they signed up on accident. Rick? Yeah, I thought maybe they wanted to talk to something offline. Rick?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Rick Viamill. I live at 1503 Lebanon Street here in Lacey. I, along with other residents on Lebanon, are here because of our shared concern for the safety of ourselves, our neighbors, and our children. Once a quiet cul-de-sac, Lebanon has become a well-known shortcut by bypassing Ruddle Road and Lacey Boulevard. Last year, several of us residents attended the public meeting at the Depot District Development Plan. We were concerned, as the plan showed Lebanon extending between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue. We were repeatedly assured that the drawings were entrances to the Depot Museum parking lot. This is not the reality. Lebanon now cuts across Lacey Boulevard to Pacific Avenue. At the end of the meeting, we were encouraged to speak with city personnel. They indicated that they would do a traffic study on Lebanon Street. They kept their word. They did do a traffic study. They placed a radar sign and traffic counter tube across the road. However, the location of the tube was within two houses of the end of Lebanon Street, where it intersects with 20th. Certainly not a good location to obtain accurate data. If the speed detection devices were placed closer to my house in the middle of the stretch between 20th and Lacey Boulevard, they would have captured speeds of 40 to 50 miles an hour. Much of Lebanon Street does not have sidewalks, so pedestrians have to watch out for this traffic. My wife and I, whoops, my wife and I are raising our autistic grandchild. He is non-verbal and is a runner, and thus far, we've been very fortunate that he's not run out into the street while a car was going by, but that doesn't mean he hasn't run out into the street. Additionally, our neighbor directly across the street has very small children that also run out into the street. We have asked for speed bumps to be placed down Lebanon, but it was suggested that we have a traffic diversion islands, which would reduce the street to one lane in multiple alternating parts of the street. That would come in at a cost of $5,000 to $10,000 to be paid for by the residents. We were also told that we have to have a supermajority in order to do anything. Our petition achieved a 38% of the total units of the street. Although not a supermajority of the total number of units on the street, it is well above a supermajority for the owner-occupied residents. This is about safety for everyone that lives on Lebanon Street. Our once-quiet little street has transformed into much more than a quiet neighborhood, but rather, a thoroughfare. We are asking the Council to forego the supermajority requirement and allocate funding to have a traffic calming device placed onto Lebanon Street. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Rick. Next up is Christian Knudsen. Is Christian Knudsen here? How about Harold Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Harold Jones, and for the record, I spell Harold, H-A-R-A-L-D. Couple of weeks ago, I was here making an inquiry as to why the swim dock was removed from the Long Lake Park. After a thorough review of newspaper articles, TV news broadcasts, and Lacey City Hall on Facebook, the Parks Board claims the dock was unsafe, and there were 46 rescues or incidents per 17,000 visitors that used the park last year. Thankfully, there were no drownings. I can certainly support the Parks Board's concern for the safety of our citizens, but then, if the safety of our citizen users is a concern, then why is lifeguard staffing only on Wednesday through Sunday from 11:30 to 7:00 p.m.? Really? What happened to staffing for Monday and Tuesday? Is the park closed those two days? Are we only concerned about user safety five days a week? As a citizen and taxpayer in Lacey, we expect public safety to be a seven-day-per-week endeavor. Would the City Council accept police or fire protection for only five days per week? Of course not. Come on, we can do better. Staff lifeguards at the Long Lake Park in the summer months with seven-day-per-week protection. Thank you.
So, Harold, I'd love to talk to you a little bit about this offline.
Okay.
There's a huge shortage in lifeguards right now, and there's a long conversation that we've been having about this specific issue.
But, you know, that's not an acceptable answer. If we had a shortage of policemen and firemen, would we say we're going to forego that protection?
I just would, I can fill you in a little bit more offline.
Sure, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on items not on the agenda? Seeing none? Our next item is the proclamation for Lacey History Month, and we'll get started on the end. Deputy Mayor, you'll do the last. You'll do the two.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas in 1852, the area now known as the Lacey Historical Neighborhood was homesteaded by an industrious settler named Isaac Wood, who eventually became the first brewmaster in the territory north of the Columbia River, and provided the inspiration for Lacey's original name of Woodland. And...
Whereas by 1891, the Northern Pacific Railroad added a rail line through the growing community, which now boasted a sulky racing track, hotel, train depot, school district, platted subdivision, and post office. And...
Whereas in 1891, a post office was established with the unique name of Lacey to avoid confusion with another town in the state.
Whereas in 1895, St. Martin's College opened its doors, and on its campus in 1922, KGY Radio received one of the earliest radio licenses in the state of Washington. And...
Whereas by the 1920s, with the advent of the automobile, Lacey had become well-known as a resort community. Over time, featuring 19 lakeside resorts, offering swimming, driving, roller skating, dancing, and exciting water shoots. And...
Whereas the City of Lacey, through a vote of its residents, was incorporated on December 5th, 1966. And whereas Lacey's Historical Commission, Historical Society, City Council, and residents recognize the significance of our community's heritage. And...
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 to be Lacey History Month. And further, I encourage all citizens to join me in discovering and celebrating Lacey's 160 years of history during this month of July and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, July 9th, 2019. And Erin, you can come up and accept this?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder, Councilmembers, and citizens of Lacey for helping us to celebrate Lacey History Month this July. We kicked off our celebration a bit early this year with another successful historic neighborhood walking tour on June 29th. We shared the fascinating history of Lacey's seldom-told stories of its immigrant population. I'd specifically like to thank Deputy Mayor Pratt, who came out and volunteered with us for the fifth year in a row. We really appreciate her help on that. In honor of Lacey History Month, I thought I would share with you a few highlights from our year so far. First up is this great photograph that we just received this week from a visitor who came on that walking tour. I've never seen anything like it, or this early of a photograph of the Lacey Post Office, and with that sign right out front on it, it just looks really cool to me. But, we're going to do some research and try to figure out exactly where it was, because in those early days, the post office moved around a lot, from store to store to hotel and various places like that. So, we tried out some new things this year, including a speaker series. So far this year, we've had 387 people attend our history talks, including 71 last night to hear about the history of Bigfoot in Washington. We're really looking forward to the rest of this year's talks, which will include great local historians sharing their research on the topics that are here on the screen. But I am most excited to tell you about the success of our traveling exhibit, Sasquatch Revealed. On opening weekend, we had almost 400 visitors. We've expanded our hours for the summer to accommodate the huge crowds we're getting. So far this year, we have seen almost 1,900 visitors. This is more than triple last year's attendance, and this doubles our record-breaking year of 2016 from our 50th anniversary. So, we're surveying our visitors who come, and of the people who gave us their email address, we're getting about a 50% return, which is pretty darn good for a survey. A few things have stood out to us, including the incredibly high number of first-time visitors. 87% of people have never been to the Lacey Museum. We were also able to get some good demographic information about where our folks are traveling from. While most of our traffic is definitely still local, about 61% are from Thurston County, we have seen a really big uptick in regional and tourist visitation. 21% of people are coming from other parts of Washington, mostly Pierce, King, and Lewis Counties, and another 16% are from the rest of the country. Many of these regional and United States travelers are even making Lacey their destination just to see this exhibit. So clearly, people are showing up, but did they like it once they got there, right? Got to know that. Well, 86% of our survey respondents rate the exhibit as very good or excellent, and 71% of visitors said that they would be very likely or likely to return. And so this tells me that although there was certainly a percentage of the visitors who came just for the niche viewing of Sasquatch, and maybe are just Bigfoot enthusiasts, a much larger group is interested in visiting museum exhibits again in the future, and we've more than doubled our request for being on our newsletter, so we're reaching a whole lot more people. And I can't speak highly enough of my staff and my volunteer whore that's really stepped up. They are getting rave reviews. I particularly want to call out Marissa Merkel, who is our education curator, and who is posed here with me, next to our Sasquatch skeleton, and Seth Huff, one of our historical commissioners. They've been getting really terrific comments on their tours. So if you haven't seen it, be sure to stop by and get a tour from them. And although we aren't as busy as we were in the first couple of weeks, this was yesterday. We had 100 people, actually 109 if you want to get specific, which I clearly did. So, it's going well. We're really, really busy. It's good. So as we're riding high on this success, we're continuing to look ahead and start to see what's coming down the pike. This Saturday, we have a kids camp, Seeking Sasquatch, where kids are going to learn about citizen science. That's all right. At the Gwinwood Conference Center. And then, we're continuing our speaker series, and we're starting to book for 2020 now. And in August, we are participating in Thurston Throwback on Fair Sunday, where all of the heritage organizations in Thurston County are getting together to educate and entertain fairgoers about local history. fairgoers about local history. So we're looking really forward to that. We also have our first-ever historic bus tour coming up in October, and we have more to come next year, including another exhibit called Washington Eighteen Eighty-Nine. So thank you so much for your continued support of the museum and for helping us celebrate Lacey History Month.
Thank you. Thanks. So next up is a referral from our planning commission, the Six-Year TIP. Martin?
My name is Martin Hoppy. I'm the city traffic engineer. This time of year, again, Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. What we like to call the TIP, it's a federal and state requirement that we have to submit it by July of each year. What I've always said is that this is basically a checkbook-type approach, just identifies the grants that we've received, and it identifies regional projects that we expect to work on in the next six years. This year, we receive, or last year, we received two new grants that we're recommending putting on the TIP is the College and Sixteenth Roundabout Design. It's a design only for this one. It'll go from where we stop at College and Twenty-Second all the way to Lacey Boulevard. And the other one is a partnership with the school district that we're doing electric vehicle charging stations throughout the city. We're removing three projects that are all under construction or built by now. College and Twenty-Second Roundabout, funds have been obligated, Super T is out there in, and Lebanon Extension. As far as the traffic mitigation list, there's no changes to the project, and this year's construction cost index was one point six percent. None of that, I can answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the proposed two thousand twenty-six-year Transportation Improvement Program and the Transportation Improvement Mitigation List.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but say the Lebanon street improvements, did that come in under budget, over budget? Do you know?
I'm assuming over budget because they found a big oil tank underneath and a whole bunch of concrete, so.
I was hoping you were going to say under budget, that way.
Is there any other?
I don't know anymore, but I'm assuming that was a big change order.
Right, yeah, it's coming in over budget because of having to deal with the old oil tank and the hazard material that went with it, as well as additional concrete structures that were underground that, you know, had not been detected.
So just some comments from Transportation Committee. You know, I guess in our deliberations and in the news, I guess, we often spend a lot of time talking about things that aren't right so we can fix them, but I think this process that the state requires to have this displayed is excellent. It really helps us to look ahead, plan, see, but it also, for Lacey, turns into a very fantastic tool for grant catching because when these funds become available, and our staff is well aware, is watching all the time, then they're presented here, the vision's done, you know, some of the planning's done and whatnot, so they're first in line to get this kind of money. And our transportation department gets a lot of money for our city to do this, so I think it's just fantastic.
Deputy Mayor?
So, it may be too early because this is just the six-year plan, but have you, has staff talked about where you're putting the EV charging stations or how it's going to be thought out?
Yeah.
And I assume this is part of the Volkswagen settlement, part of it, or not?
What's that?
Volkswagen settlement.
Is that part of that?
No.
No.
This was a congestion mitigation air quality grant from TRPC. Yeah, we have talked a little bit about where it's going to go. We're having a meeting with the school district next week on a kind of kickoff project. They're looking at putting it there, their administrative building over there on College Street. We were talking about putting it at City Hall, the library, and the community center.
Oh, the community center, yes.
Yeah, the rack didn't play out because it is outside the congestion area.
Area, okay.
Actually, the rack or the community center was also, but...
I was hoping something like west, central, and east part of Lacey, really? You know?
Well, I think there's a lot of opportunities to, the deputy mayor is talking about, there's some other money out there for the Volkswagen settlement, and a lot of that's being used for electric vehicle charging stations, so that's something else going through.
And I think Puget Sound Energy is talking about it as well.
Yeah, we're meeting with them in a couple of weeks. Jacob and I are, they're looking at Woodland Square.
And Walmart just had a charging station put in the parking lot as well.
I think so, yeah. Is there any other discussion? Do we, I see that the Martin Way I-five interchange improvements is still on here. Do we have a timeline on when that's going to go forward?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Timing is budget-oriented.
Just wondering.
I was hoping the state would cover that one.
Yeah, we are. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-six-year TIP and Transportation Improvement Mitigation List. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, next, next up is the mayor's report, and I just have one item. Erwin is up for another term for the Parks Board, and so I would move that we reappoint him for his next term. Can I get a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Pretty easy one.
Things are going well in Parks Board, so.
Charity's great.
Yep. So all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries, and he's been reappointed. Now to the city manager's report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have two reports before you. One is the annual transportation benefit district, and I believe Scott Agar will provide that.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's staff is requesting that the council approve our two thousand eighteen Transportation Benefit District annual report. So by way of history, the council formed the Transportation Benefit District in two thousand sixteen. The reason for that is the general fund monies that had been used in the past to maintain our pavement level, pavement condition level, had been exhausted, and we needed another source of funds to keep our pavement in good shape. And I think we said it many, many times that for maintaining pavement infrastructure, it's kind of like the Fram oil commercial, you can pay a little now or a lot later. If you maintain your pavements at a high pavement condition index in good shape, it costs a lot less to maintain over the years than if you let it go to the point that you have full replacement costs. So, like I said, in two thousand sixteen, the council formed the Transportation Benefit District. On Valentine's Day, two thousand seventeen, the citizens showed us a love and with a super majority passed the funding mechanism for that Transportation Benefit District, and the funding mechanism was a zero-point-two-percent sales tax increase. So, by the RCWs, we are required every year to fill out an annual report that needs to be approved by the city council. And so you have that before you. Just, again, for history, in two thousand eighteen, our overlay project, the contract amount was around one point four million dollars, and that covered about twenty thousand square yards of pavement rehabilitation. This year, our two thousand nineteen overlay project is what we're calling the Super T Project on College Street. So, it's a grind overlay and improvements on College Street from Thirty-seventh Avenue or the Mullen Extension to Yelm Highway, and then Yelm Highway from the west city limits to Ruttle Road. So that was a four-point-one-million-dollar construction contract there. You've probably seen a lot of information in the press. Right now, we're, you know, in the process of grinding. We're supposed to pave one element of it this week, but it was delayed due to rain. So the northern part of that will be paved Monday and Tuesday, you know, if the current weather report holds out. And, you know, we hope to have that completed, that whole project completed, early fall. And so that four-point-one million, we're overlaying, planning overlaying, and doing other improvements on about ninety-five thousand square yards of asphalt. Our two thousand eighteen finances, revenues were two-point-nine million, and there were another, other revenues, a hundred and twenty-three thousand for a total of three-point-zero-eight-six million dollars. In two thousand eighteen, we spent a hundred and ninety-eight thousand on engineering and another one-point-two million dollars on construction. Not all of the two thousand eighteen project, overlay project was completed. There's a section on Stikes Drive that PSE was required to relocate their utilities so we could install a stormwater component there. They weren't able to do that in eighteen. They just completed about a month ago, so we're in the process of installing the stormwater, and then we will complete the overlay portion of that project. So our ending fund balance in two thousand eighteen was two-point-nine million dollars. So that's a snapshot of our two thousand eighteen annual Transportation Benefit District report. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
I've moved to approve the TBD two thousand eighteen annual report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I just have a question on the two thousand eighteen project, Scott.
Mm-hmm.
So the Stikes Drive part that isn't completed yet?
Right.
That's funded, though, from the money spent, the two thousand eighteen money that you mentioned?
Right, right.
So it's already paid for, it just says the workers isn't complete?
Correct. I mean, yes. The money's still there.
Right.
Right.
Yes. Deputy Mayor?
So, has any of the projects, and of course, I'm thinking of College Street, both the Super T and, well, the other isn't included, the Roundabout, but has what you, has it been covered enough by the funds from the Transportation Benefit District, or did some of that go over, did over construction costs?
The two thousand eighteen project was a hundred percent funded out of the Transportation Benefit District. The two thousand nineteen, the Super T project, is partially grant-funded.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we, you know, we have not overrun those monies at all.
Okay.
Just for the record, you know, Lacey has a history of very good roads, and we're growing quickly, and we needed to put this to the voters to decide themselves if they needed to step it up to have a big-city transportation budget, and they did. So it's nice to see the fruit of that vote going to pass, and this hard work will be done this summer, and those, you know, roads will be, continue to be excellent. And it's just interesting to watch as we grow how, you know, it does cost more, considerably more, to have more roads. And it's just a good story that the citizens stepped up to take care of this business.
So, I have a quick question for Troy. We approved, I think our last meeting, a fund balance transfer if needed, basically for the Super T. Are we going to have to use that, or if by delaying because of the weather, we're going to somehow get around that and be able to come up with the funds?
That's a great question. It's still to be determined, but the, we don't really anticipate having the need to use that interfund loan. We just wanted to make sure it was in place to be timely in the event that we don't have enough cash flow, but I don't think we'll need it, but it is certainly a safety net and looking forward.
So, another quick question about the Transportation Benefit District. Are we receiving those funds every month when we receive it, and it goes into a separate fund, or is that paid out once a year?
It is collected every month.
Okay.
It's basically the same as our general sales tax, so it's collected two months in arrears. It is going into a separate fund, and that is part of the reason that we wanted the interfund loan in place because it is a standalone fund, and we can't allow that go into a negative cash situation.
Sure, sure. So, and our sales tax has been really strong, obviously, and so that should be helping the Transportation Benefit District.
For sure.
Funding.
Just real quick, I saw revenues were three million eighty-six thousand two hundred and forty-six, and expenditures were two million nine thirty-two, five sixty-three, about a hundred and fifty thousand, you know?
I think, I think that's our fund balance ending, so that wasn't expenses.
I'm looking, something wrong, though. But what I was getting at, if we had a hundred and fifty thousand, that wasn't spent in nineteen eighty-six, probably rolled over.
I see, yeah.
That could possibly be used in efforts like the public spoke to tonight, say, on, you know, neighborhoods where people are driving excessive speeds.
Can I speak to that?
Absolutely.
So, that would not be an appropriate use of these funds. This is, the voters, what they voted on was supporting this fund for rehabilitation, not for new projects. So that would not be an appropriate use of these funds. And there, and there is a, there is a traffic calming policy that we've worked with this neighborhood on, that's administered through the Transportation Committee, where we go out and we analyze the traffic. Radar signs are not the speed detection.
I get that, but, I mean, long before the improvement on Twentieth, that street existed for a long time, was, you know, Lebanon's been there for forever, and this is a Transportation Benefit District, and I think that would benefit the transportation on that road.
No, I don't think so, yeah. I know where you're getting from, but I agree. I think that's for maintenance preservation.
It's an idea.
Although it's a good idea, but I don't think so.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
When people say, "I'm breaking the law," I'm going to get defensive here.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah, that's all right, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Seeing none?
Yes, actually. So, the, we've purchased, I believe, equipment that helps to conserve the concrete that we already have on sidewalks, as well as conserving labor, and I just thought that was a really cool piece of equipment that we invested in, and I wonder if you would tell the people about that.
I'd love to. I just wish I had pictures because, anyway, yeah, the piece of equipment that we bought has a very elegant name. It's called the Sidewalk Sucker, and it's, so in the past, what we've done, any time that sidewalks have been lifted or vaulted due to tree roots or other items, we've gone out and we grind it down so that the, you know, that the elevated edge meets the current edge. And as the tree roots grow, we go back and re-grind, and then ultimately, there's nothing left to grind, and we have to go and remove that concrete, rubbleize it, and then pour new concrete. So this Sidewalk Sucker device is a device that allows us to go in and make a saw cut on the panel, lift the entire panel up, go and remove the tree roots, re-grade underneath, and just set the panel back in place. So, you know, it's sustainable, we're not having to, you know, rubbleize existing concrete and pour new concrete. It's much less expensive than ultimately having to replace the entire sidewalk panel. But, anyway, Councilman Greenstein and I were having a conversation this morning where it is not quite as quick, though, as just going out and grinding. So as residents request, you know, report vaulted sidewalks, we can't get to them as fast as we used to. But, yeah, hopefully I can get some good pictures and show you. It's quite an innovative device.
Neat.
Is there any other discussion?
I just want to touch base real quick, that when I ask a simple question, a simple no would be fine, you know, and not be disrespected when I have the mic.
Okay, I agree, I agree. Thank you for that reminder. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Transportation Benefit District two thousand eighteen annual report. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, another item before you is a Thurston County construction and local agreement related to the Mullen Road project. Tyson will provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. City staff recommends that council authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement with Thurston County for the Mullen Road Improvement Project. This is a roadway reconstruction project where the county is the lead agency. This figure here shows you the project limits. So on the west side, it starts where the roadway improvements at Timberline that we did a few years back stops, so you can see the Timberline Baptist Church there. And it's about a mile long, the corridor, so it goes all the way till just past the intersection with Carpenter and Mullen Road. This, this project will provide five-foot bike lanes along the corridor and also provide a nine-to-ten-and-a-half-foot a nine to ten and a half foot sidewalk, so it'll really improve the multimodal transportation along that section. The city contribution to this project totals, and this is based on engineers' estimates right now, three point six million dollars. There's a city contribution to roadway for four hundred and eighty thousand. The water utilities is one point eight million and sewer is one point three million. Total construction cost, based on the county's estimate, is twelve point five million for this project. And the city portion of the roadway is a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of Mullen Road and Carpenter Road. Several years back, we had purchased the vacant parcel you see on the east side of the roundabout for this that we had donated to the county as part of this partnership and project. And this helped to minimize right-of-way acquisitions with private property and businesses in the area. So as I mentioned earlier, the length of the project is approximately a mile and for the entire length, there's pretty much city water and sewer currently located there. So with the regrading and realignment of the roadway, there was gonna be many conflicts with our current system. And so this became an opportunity for us to upsize the current system to allow for greater capacity and future growth with both the water and the pressure sewer force main that's out there. The project, they plan to go out to add pretty soon, so they expect to start possibly late this year, early next year. And the project duration, they're estimating at two years right now. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the Mullen Road Reconstruction Project Interlocal Agreement for Construction with Thurston County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
So, and you might have explained it there. So there is part that is in the county that they're paying for, yes?
Yeah, for the roadway, the city, so here the roundabout, the city. The city roadway section is only that roundabout at the intersection of Carpenter and Mullen. So the rest of the roadway work is the county's. However, the utility work, that water and sewer is all city utility, so that is all city work.
Throughout that. What I was wondering is it didn't ever mention anything of the county's cost to that and...
Yeah, I, I didn't show that in the slide, so in this slide, the city's contribution, this is based on an engineer's estimates, about three point six million. The total construction cost is twelve point five million. So there's the county share and they have grants also.
Okay, okay. That's what I was confused about.
Any other discussion?
I, I would feel much more comfortable if Lacey was the lead in the government entity here.
Yeah, so is that what's gonna happen is we're gonna, they're gonna go out to bid or?
Yes, there's a lead agency on this project.
Yeah. Councilor?
Well, I just, I would really like to compliment staff for working closely with county to make two projects align. I know we've had our, our challenges in the urban growth area and this is, I think, a great example of cooperation, so well done.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to have this Mullen Road Reconstruction Project Interlocal Agreement for Construction with Thurston County be approved. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I abstain.
And one extension, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple more announcements. Go for it.
Thank you.
So as per the interlocal agreement policy that council approved, I signed four interlocal agreements and as per the policy, I want to report those out to council. One is related to a mutual aid agreement, which is the FEMA Region Three. Basically a cooperative agreement in case of an emergency or natural disaster, we agree to share equipment, personnel in times of emergency. That agreement will last through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. I also signed another interlocal agreement involving Lot and the city of Lacey. This is also a mutual aid agreement in case of a sewer, emergency or a containment issue spill. There is no end date to that agreement that can be canceled by thirty days' notice of either party. And then I signed two intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements. That's an opportunity for the city of Lacey to, in a sense, benefit from a larger consortium, getting the best possible bid. One originates from King County, the other one is from Minnesota State. Those follow the bid processes prescribed by RCW and those are replacing prior agreements. And I just have one final announcement. I'd like to introduce Mary Ann Hardy, our new Director of Human Resources. We're extremely excited to have her on board. She, her official day was June twenty-fourth. She spent about fourteen years in the city of Edmonds and she's already making a positive impact and I said council was very nice and staff hasn't scared her away so far, so we're pretty excited. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
So next up is our standing general committees. First up is the Utilities Committee. Councilmember Zeman.
Sorry, we're having a technical trouble here.
Transportation Committee?
Okay, now I'm scrambling to get mine. Okay. Well, transportation, yeah, actually, Carolyn, I'm happy to present this though. I was only present by phone. Would you like me to?
Go for it.
Okay. So transportation met on June fourth and Councilmember Cox and I were present and I by phone. So thank you for technology. Actually, phone's pretty old technology, but we're still thankful. We discussed the six-year transportation improvement program, which we discussed thoroughly We also discussed the intertransportation benefit, which we also discussed thoroughly and commented on tonight. And we proposed a time change for our meeting, our next meeting. That's it.
Well, great. Nice report.
Thanks.
How about back to utilities? Councilmember?
Thank you. The Utilities Committee came together and talked about the water system serving Lacey and its urban growth area and talked about two well sources, Source Nineteen and Source Thirty-One, talking about experiencing sand events. We did approve the submersible, submersible pump, which is going in to, to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore. And it's the unidirectional flushing program is proactive method of improving water quality by flowing water at a high velocity through a single segment of pipe, remove naturally occurring sedimentation from the pipe walls. So we are taking care of the water there. And I think that was it because we did discuss all of this at a previous council meeting. Thank you.
Great. That's, that's right. We, didn't we have a, had a pump in there, but it was undersized and then we just approve a new pump that's gonna fix that problem once and for all?
Yeah.
Right. So we were addressing the standing issue and, you know, so the well casing and screens were reconfigured. And then we changed from basically a standard pump to a submersible pump, which would eliminate this column of water dropping down every time the, the pump shut off. But that was just a rental pump and it's smaller than the, the one we need. So that, well, that drove the sole source need.
Yeah. When do we, when would we get the new pump in?
I, I don't have a date, but I can find out and get back to it.
But we sole sourced it, so we can just go straight to them. We don't have to go through the big bid process.
Right, right.
Okay, great. Thank you. So next up is Boards, Commissions, Community Reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. So Deputy Mayor?
So Joint Animal Services Commission will be having a retreat coming up, so I have no report yet on that. Lot, there is no meeting in July. The Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, or ORCA, met yesterday morning, July tenth, and there were two hearings held. They included changing, changes to the gas station rule. And some of the significant changes is it moved from a permit system to a notification system to streamline the permitting process for qualifying gas stations. The gas stations will need to meet certain prerequisites to qualify for the notification system in lieu of a permit. And, but best available controlled technology will still continue to be a requirement. And the NOI, or Notice of Intent, will need to be filed fifteen days prior to commencing construction to allow for business assistance as needed. The, they updated ORCA's Rule Eight Twelve, which is about dispensing facilities, gasoline dispensing facilities, to incorporate federal and state standards. And then also because of that, Rule Six Point One and Six Point One Ten will be updated to align with changes to Rule Eight Point One Two. And it exempts from increased documentation and lowers fees for gasoline storage tanks less than two thousand gallon storage capacity and gasoline dispensing facilities with a cumulative gasoline storage capacity of less than ten thousand gallons. And this is to take care of the mom and pop gas stations so they don't have as high of requirements, but still need to make sure that they are compliant, but they don't have these extra steps to follow. And so by changing the rule, the rule will make ORCA more consistent with other local clean air agencies in Washington. There was no one that testified and they didn't receive any comments. So after the hearing closed, the board passed, passed the amendments to Rule Six Point One, Six Point One Ten and Eight Point One Two. The second hearing was on the adjustment to ORCA's fee schedules for Notice of Intent. It amends Resolution Two Sixty-Three, Two Sixty-Four, Two Seventy-Six and adopted by resolution to include the new Notice of Intent fee with effective date of August seventeenth. And so what that does is if the facilities are less than ten thousand gallon storage capacity, the fee is two hundred and fifty-six dollars. The exemption decreases the fee by about fifteen hundred dollars, so it's pretty significant to small gas stations. Again, there was no testimony, testimony at the hearing and no comments, so that, the fee schedule was passed. The Thurston County's outdoor burn ban begins next Monday, July fifteenth, and ORCA is actually going to ask jurisdictions, including Lacey, all in Thurston County, to post no burn signs in areas that would help spread the word about the burn ban. For the month of June, Lacey, which again records Thurston County's PM two point five microns of poor air quality, it actually had thirty good days of air quality, so that was excellent. And it, this was pretty significant because it was really, the maximum record was actually significantly lower, like five point three microns meter cubed, as opposed to the maximum, which falls up to thirteen point four microns. So that's, it was really low. And then Thurston County's ozone level was only slightly higher when compared to Yelm's monitor. And the ozone was low most of June, except for two days when there was high temperature. And there's no meeting in August. And I have Thurston Thrives on here, but that is not my committee. It is Councilmember Cox's.
So would you like to give that? Can you, putting you on the spot, can you give that?
Sure, I can rearrange just a little bit.
Well, you're up next, so is that the end of your report?
Oh, that's the end of my report. Sorry about that.
Okay. So we'll start with Thurston Thrives. They met on June seventeenth and we received a briefing on the upcoming Thurston County health assessment. And the state of health in Thurston County, there's good news and there's bad news. We recently, it was recently announced that Thurston County is the fifth healthiest county in all of Washington. So that was the good news. And the bad news is, is that we have some really serious gaps in healthcare among parts of our population. And these are avoidable gaps because they are underserved groups. So, for example, the biggest gap in dental care. Anybody want to venture a guess which group that is? Elderly. Because Medicare doesn't pay for dental.
Right.
Care. And the leading costs of death in Thurston County?
False.
Cancer.
Oh.
Which I found kind of frightening. You know, you think of heart disease being the number one killer nationally, so that, yeah, that was a little startling. So for the upcoming strategy, they're going to be working to try to more clearly identify the gaps in access to public health. So they'll be looking at geographic area where you live, income, age, gender, sexual orientation, race and ethnicity, language, disability status and veteran status and hoping we're hitting the, the most underserved groups there. We also broke into small groups and we're asked to focus on identifying barriers to achieving good health for everyone in Thurston County. And the group that I participated in came up with three lacks, lack of access to healthcare, lack of legal services and lack of transportation. And I unfortunately had to leave the meeting a little early to get to emergency management training, but I have a feeling similar things came out of the other groups. Before I move on, I, I wanted to give just a short report on something that isn't on our, our list tonight. I went to the Thurston Thrives Housing Action Team meeting yesterday and Lacey got a lot of love at that meeting and I, I wanted to pass that along. We got kudos for our innovating hous, housing strategies for affordable housing. And I think people, it's, the word is starting to get around. You know, they're, they're starting to hear about some of the strategies and really showing us some love. And then Chief Simcoe got a shout out from two representatives of the city of Olympia who are working with you on the new Housing Council Task Force that you're participating in. And so, yeah. This came up because I gave a brief report on our, our camping ordinance and talked a little bit about where we are with that and, and all. And it was just, it was unprompted. They both, you know, said that. So thank you for that. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Strategy is going to be having a new name soon, but we haven't quite coined it yet. But this reconstituted group now will include Thurston County and we had our first meeting on June thirteenth with the county in attendance. We got a briefing on Thurston County's emergency housing ordinance and they approved it on June twenty-fifth with what's known as Low Barrier. And we spent some time on vision, short-term ideas, long-term ideas, strategies for what this new group will be working on. Our first project, maybe only project, we don't know yet, will be trying to establish a camp of sorts. I'm not sure exactly what to call it yet because we haven't defined it, but we're calling it perhaps a stabilization site for homeless. Each of the, each of the jurisdictions will have one elected official representing them. So I'm Lacey's representative. We'll have an alternate each. And then we have two staff members from each jurisdiction representing a number of disciplines. So Chief Simcoe and Rick Walk are, are representatives on there. And we're lucky that Scott Spence gets to come to some of our meetings as well and appreciate his attendance. So the next, the group will meet next Thursday, right before our council meeting. So the rest of this will go fast, I promise. Health and Human Services Council will meet on July fifteenth. There was no June meeting. Intercity Transit did not meet July third. Their meeting, next meeting is July seventeenth. And the Regional Planning Council didn't meet on the first Friday as normal because we're having a all-day retreat tomorrow and Deputy Mayor and I will be attending both. And that's my report.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
Thank you. So Emergency Medical Services met on June nineteenth. Meeting really was mostly housekeeping type stuff, so there's only a couple of things to report out on. One is that the comprehensive plan that we're working on, the long-term strategic plan, is well underway and should be completed by the end of the year on schedule. is well underway and should be completed by the end of the year on schedule. And the other was, it took up a good chunk of the meeting, and that was a pretty lengthy discussion about when it will be necessary to go back out to the public to seek levy restoration. So that is looking like it is probably still at least a couple of years away, but sometime in the next two to four years it'll, it'll need to be happened, so. And that is my report on EMS. Thurston 911 met on the 16th of July. Most of this meeting was dedicated to Lewis County, actually, so we had the Lewis County manager along with their entire, their three commissioners, and the city manager of Chehalis as well. And they were there because they're actually undertaking a feasibility study on reorganizing their 911 system, and they're looking to TCOM, Thurston County Communications, as possibly a partner. So they're looking to possibly come, join TCOM. So they were there to present where they are so far on it, which is not very far along, but they are, they are going to go out for a feasibility, they're hiring, looking now to hire a contractor to do a feasibility study to look at that as an option. They've had some serious internal issues between their police and fire and different organizations in different cities as opposed to the sheriff, and at this point, they do not have an organization like Thurston County. At this point, it's actually run by the county commission.
Oh.
So they do not have, you know, a TCOM-type setup. So they're looking to come to us possibly, so we'll see where that goes, but the feasibility study is going to start, and we'll, you know, we'll kind of see from there where it goes. Of course, the, our committee, the TCOM committee, made sure they understood clearly that the only way we would have any interest is if it wasn't going to cost the taxpayers of Thurston County any additional money, or in any way affect negatively their service level. So we'll, we'll see what the feasibility study looks like on that, but that took most of our meeting. The only other thing that was done at that meeting was that we did pass a resolution for TCOM to send out a mailer, an informational mailer. They are, TCOM is going to be, going to the county commission here in the next week or so with about, requesting them to put on the ballot funding, a funding mechanism to replace the radio system that we've talked about for the last year, year and a half. The current radio system that our first responders are using, police and fire, is not good. We have parts of the county where it doesn't work, we have buildings even within Lacey where their radio system doesn't work. So it needs to be replaced, it's expensive, about $30 million. So it's a huge ask, and obviously there's no money there in the budget for that type of project, so it'll be something that they're looking to put on the ballot in November. So the, TCOM will be sending out an informational mailer, it'll be informational only, it will not be, you know, anything more than that, but it will go out to all of the, all of the homes in Thurston County. And then, do you want me to report on SWAC?
You can.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
So Mike was, Councilmember Stedman was unavailable for the SWAC meeting this month, and so I attended in his place. Pretty light agenda, truthfully, there wasn't much. The big thing and the reason that it was important to have a Lacey representative there was they were looking at a resolution to kind of go along with the resolution or the letter, I guess it is, that we sent as a council to the county regarding SWAC and the activities with the, with their contracts. So Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater have all done that. The SWAC has now done similar things. So we passed a resolution, basically it says three things. It asks that the county commission basically make SWAC more important, you know, put them, have them have more of a say in what's going on. SWAC wants to have a complete review of the solid waste management plan that they actually wrote, and then somehow it got shelved. They want to actually be involved in writing the new chapter regarding contaminated recycling. This is a new state mandate that this chapter has to be added. SWAC wants to be the one that writes that chapter. And then the third thing was asking the county to extend its current contract for transportation and disposal for at least three to five years, rather than going out to RFP now, which is what their original, their plan is. Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, real quick, a great report, Lenny, by the way. Followed with our letter, Tomwater, Olympia, and the port also. I believe maybe Yelm might have sent a letter as well, but all the, yeah, all the major cities in Thurston County, all united with our concerns with the RFP process. What's great about this is hopefully it gets to the point, it gets delayed to the point where we get past June 2021 to where we'll find out if Calitz comes online or not, and that's a potential savings of $1 to $3 million per year. It's, it just makes all the sense in the world. It's great when, you know, community partners and, you know, our local jurisdictions all see the value in this, get together and unify and make it happen, because going forward was a mistake.
Yeah, so there's a staff member there from SWAC that's sort of representing the county. What was their feedback for, I mean, we've pushed back pretty hard, all the jurisdictions have pushed back pretty hard on sort of leaving SWAC out of this process where the perceived, that we're being, they're being left out of it.
So there's several staff members there actually, and the county commissioner as well, sitting there. The county commissioner will tell you abstained from the vote, which was the correct move, you know, we're voting on something to put in front of him, obviously. The staff really didn't speak up on this at all, but I will tell you that they, the head of the solid waste department has resigned, so they will be there in the process of looking for a new director for the solid waste department.
And the vote was unanimous, right?
The vote was unanimous.
Wow, okay.
Except for the one who abstained, yeah.
And real quick, everybody knows that this is very important to me, I've reported on it several times. I had a close friend retire after 31 years in U.S. Special Forces in Fifth Group, so I went to Kentucky and, you know, celebrated him and serviced his country, so appreciate it.
Appreciate that. So next, oh, do you have that in the report?
Great job, Len.
Next up is Councilmember Hearn.
So Olympia and beyond met a couple weeks ago, and think about back in the day when visitors came to town and said, hey, kids, we need to go to the Visitor and Convention Bureau office and check out what's going on in town. Well, it's not really like that today, and their attendance isn't, not extremely high, even though they have what seems to be a fantastic location at the State of Washington. State of Washington has been, you know, not making it super easy for them to be there, parking issues, things like that. So they've gone to a month to month with the idea that the resources for that visitor and convention center would be better used to go with digital, where people are looking for stuff. So that affects Lacey and our promotion through that, so it's just kind of an interesting I had the privilege of substituting for Deputy Mayor Pratt for Jazzcom, and the major points are, that meeting were, a particular case unpacked the fact that one particular dog was able to have three separate bites within a time period, and all the procedures and warnings and everything were done correctly, and the courts are deciding right now how that's handled. But Jazzcom will be looking at what can be done as far as the rulemaking is to help prevent that from happening again. And we had some testimony that was there that was pretty, pretty traumatic. The other item that came up that certainly involves Lacey, and Scott, you might want to speak into this, but Jazzcom, which is, by the way, staffed by Lacey and books are handled by Lacey, were asked to cease the use of tasers in, until further training was implemented. And the officer at the, at the meeting was able to persuade Jazzcom to the best of their authority to reinstate those tasers, but get the training done, the additional training done ASAP. So that's, that's what, what happened at that meeting, which was on June 26th. Did you want to speak to that, Scott, or not?
The only thing I could say is about any time that you use a taser to level a use of force, and that sometimes has to be taken very seriously, it opens up risk to the employee as well as Jazzcom as an entity. And so without the proper procedures and training, you know, we put exposure again on the agency and employees, so if that's a tool that is necessary, we just need to make sure that we minimize that exposure if we deploy that tool.
Well, I think that the committee agreed, but until, as that training's being done, the officers felt at risk personally. So hopefully their training is being implemented immediately, and so they can continue to, well, so they can, as they're continuing to use their tasers as needed, under that new training. So that's, that's my report. Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking is hosting a human trafficking 101 on July 16th, which is next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at Mountain View Church, which is on Israel Road, at 940 Israel Road in Tomwater. Washington Trafficking Prevention, which is the parent sponsor of this training, trains across the state with a goal of empowering youth and the caring adults in their lives to join the fight against human trafficking. So I'd encourage anybody that can to attend the human trafficking 101 Tuesday, the 6th or 16th at 6:00 PM, and we've invited all area law enforcement. Did you have work?
I will be there.
Wonderful, thank you, Chief, for your ability to do that on short notice, thank you.
Councilmember Hearn, can I also add to that? I've had five years within this community of working on human trafficking advocacy, both labor and sex trafficking, and I did attend one of their trafficking 101 events at the Olympia Library. And I do want to echo the council member about attending because it is wonderful information. It does help you think outside the box of what a stereotype of trafficking is and what that looks like, because your eyes don't see what your mind doesn't know. And so I do encourage everyone from the community to attend if at all possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, before I get to my reports, Councilmember Hearn was reporting on the VCB. I just want to remind the public that the South Sound Lacey, the Lacey South Sound Chamber also has a visitor's center as well to complement the county's efforts. Lenny already gave the SWAC report, I have no report for the chamber. Community Action Council was relatively light agenda, you know, just basic, we got a few more grants and doing a few more wonderful things. We expanded outside of Thurston County, Mason County, and Lewis County to, oh, somewhere by the gorge. I believe it's a pilot program, and our crews are going over there for a couple weeks during the summer, and I'll be happy to report on that as soon as we get the reports back on that, but, excuse me?
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, but I'm not, yeah, but I'm not positive. It just came to mind, and I thought it was a creative way of, you know, to, as long as we're helping residents lower their energy bills and, and keeping them from going home, from home to homeless, it's a, it's a great thing to mention on. We did welcome a new administrative assistant, her name is Lisa Willhide. Katrina Wilson took a new job with the agency, so she's still with us doing great things, but just wanted to welcome her. And other than that, like I said, it was just the basic meeting, and next to their finances, I'd put them up with the City of Lacey and Director Troy Wu's Finance Department, they're that strong in responsibility of public monies and audit findings, none as usual, so. Other than that, that's just, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Zeman.
Yes, I get to report on the Economic Development Council. I was not able to report at our last session due to time constraints, so this is a little late, but still very exciting. Thurston County EDC had their gala on May 30th, and two Lacey businesses out of all of Thurston County earned accolades at the annual gala. SCJ Alliance was recognized as, with the Large Business Award, and Gabby's Comics, just over here around the corner, was recognized with the Small Business Award. And that's very exciting for the City of Lacey to have two businesses out of Thurston County take home awards is very cool. And just some EDC information for everyone, every dollar invested in EDC activities returns $25.80 to our local economy, 553 jobs are created and retained, 76 million increase in economic production, and 31 million in new employee income, which is all wonderful numbers to hear for our economy. Also, we had the Lacey Makerspace ribbon cutting recently, and that is a great collaboration between the EDC and the City of Lacey, a wonderful place for innovation and creativity for all people in our community. And then I'd also like to just pass it over to Mr. Walk, he was able to attend the last board meeting that I wasn't at.
Yes, and the last board meeting was on June 26th, and the highlights of that agenda was Gene Angel gave a presentation on the EDC dashboard, the data they use in looking at potential recruitment strategies, what are current demographics of the community, what should we focus on in terms of supply chain, and then what type of gaps analysis, or doing consecutive gap analysis so that we can identify where we're, maybe have some weaknesses and build on those weaknesses. One interesting thing about using these tools is it also helps us look at if a company, the fit the potential company has for the area, is it something that we provide the necessary support that they would need and vice versa, do they meet our community values? And then in terms of workforce supply, do we have the workforce availability and what type of training programs we would need to do to help supplement existing training as well as future workforce. Other items of note include, they did highlight, again, the Lacey Makerspace ribbon cutting and open house, also that they're in the active stage of recruitment for the new Center for Business and Innovation Director position that was vacated by Celia Nightingale. And I can also say that's, process is moving along because we were, spent all day in interviews, interviewing a good, a solid candidate pool. I believe a decision will be made at some point in the next several weeks with the goal of trying to have somebody in that position, I mean, in the, in the vogue. And then also there was a report out of the recent trip organized by the Visitors Convention Bureau to go down to a conference for placemaking and tourism, and really the, what was promoted out of that conference was the value of working together with a common vision for a region in promoting tourism and city places, you can still retain your unique identities as communities, but have that common vision, and then really a place matters, you know, placemaking, those type of amenities that people would want to spend and hang out. It's one thing to come, go to an area to see something, but then what's there to make them stay a few extra hours or a couple of days just to experience the local culture. And with that, that concluded the board meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember, you have something, a quick follow-up, Councilmember Stedman?
Yeah, I just want to touch base, I had no real report for the Lacey South Sound Chamber, but the barbecue fest is this weekend. I almost forgot to say that date, and thanks for the reminder, Councilmember Zeman.
Yeah, so that's tomorrow, starts tomorrow from, it goes from, oh, Saturday, oh, jeez, Saturday from 10 to?
It starts tomorrow for me because I'm going down and getting the trailer to get ready. But it's almost all day Saturday over at the Huntermore Park. Yeah, great.
Get there early because they sold 3,000 tickets in about three hours last year. It, it is a wonderful event with great food by local people, local businesses, and it's wonderful for kids. My son loves the bubble bus, and the police are there, as well as our fire, fire folks are there, and it's just a wonderful time for all families in the area. are there, and it's just a wonderful time for all families in the area, so I encourage everyone to be out there. I know a couple of us will be at the Lacey info booth, so enjoy.
And one last thing is, I mentioned that I went to Kentucky Fifth Group Special Forces Retirement, and, you know, celebrate my friend that, you know, 31 years, all Special Forces, all that, but at, on, at the, during that trip, I got to meet a guy named Christopher Spence, our city manager's brother, who is also a Fifth Group Special Forces guy, and just wanted to recognize his family for the public service that they give to their, their nation and local government and stuff, and he, he's a good guy.
Yeah, this is the...
You failed to meet my mother, though.
I did.
This is the more popular brother that you're talking about here, yeah. Okay, we've, we've reached the end of our agenda, and I hope everyone has a great, good weekend, attend Barbecue Fest, hopefully our weather will change and we'll get a summer here for a change, but until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.